Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first order of business is to reorganize the select board. Some years we put it off and delay it and we don't change members, but we have a membership change and we have a vacant seat. So it's time to reorganize the select board. I think traditionally in years past before we had all the jumbling of the boards, what they tried to do is get the person there last year would be the chairman, if they want to do so, and that would be Dylan. We try to get everyone a chance to rotate the slots out, not so much elect people in as do it in a timely manner, so it's, if you like Dylan, I'd nominate you for the chair.
I would second that nomination, Dylan, whether you want me to or not.
Well, I'd like to renominate, I would like to renominate Craig O'Sullivan for the chair position. Those are my feelings on the matter.
I think you're declining the nomination?
Yeah, that's...
That's right.
Okay.
I have no problem keeping the chair. Just because it's your first year, I don't think it's a good time. Learn a little bit more for us and do it after. I'm certainly not anybody that's power hungry, wants to sit in the chair, but I do try to keep the meetings concise and smooth and I think I allocate discussions.
Absolutely fine with me and I certainly have my vote.
Okay, so you were seconding his nomination for me?
I was second Dylan's nomination for Greg O'Sullivan to act as chair.
All right, so we have motion to second for Greg O'Sullivan to remain as chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
And I can say aye since we're here present, he has to be my name. Okay, next is the vice chair. Once again, Dylan, I nominate you for the vice chair. Try to get you to, if you'll accept that.
Yep, that sounds good to me.
Okay, you have a second on that then?
I have a second.
Okay, well, a motion to second for Dylan Clark as a vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Clark, yes.
And of course that brings a clerk, nominate Maureen Marshall for the clerk.
Yeah, nominate Maureen Marshall.
And I'll second.
For the clerk.
It's great that the woman gets the secretary's job. I'm thrilled with that.
That's how we usually start our first year. What's fun about it is you get to do all the signatory stuff, except for things that are supposed to be assigned by the chair, so it gets to be a nuisance sometimes.
Well, thanks.
But, next year you get out of that, we give it to whoever's new. I have a motion to second for Maureen Marshall to be clerk. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Yes?
I guess it's a yes.
Well, welcome, thank you. It's tedious. Now, formally, obviously, you are a doctor. How do you want to be addressed here? Is Maureen fine? We typically use first names. Do you prefer Dr. Marshall, a doctor? How would you prefer to be addressed?
I would say if it is a very formal proceeding, as doctor, however you can call me, Maureen, and probably, if you, that would even be nice behind my back.
Typically, just, we just say Maureen, but yeah, if it's formal, we're certainly getting to it, and that's by acknowledge, because that's an accomplishment that I certainly can't take claim of, so I think it's necessary for you to address as you please. Discussion on the Hardwick Select Board on potential IMA for EMS services.
I'm going to start at 7:15, I believe.
Oh, so we'll hold that until 7:15? I always go right down the list, so we'll jump right on to the annual town meeting date and warrant. I like the date.
Yep, the 15th, 15th.
We typically, I don't think, open the warrant that long, but I don't have a problem with how long it's open, as long as we make sure we're closing it in time to get everything dealt with that we need to, because we need time to review the things going on it. What was your suggested?
It was open the warrant today and then close it a month from today. I looked at...
The 20th, what does May 20th, that's...
I looked at past practice and the month was...
Yeah.
This timeframe was about average.
So it's open...
Sometimes it was a week shorter.
Opened for a month till 2020?
I would think a week shorter. Three weeks should be plenty of time. I think people who want stuff, like Mr. Cranston's already got his letter into us, because it's a process for bylaw proposed changes, we have to accept that and hand it off to the planning board, and then they have to have their, I want to say two meetings, you probably know Paul, two meetings in a certain timeframe on it and bring the recommendation back, and then it can, you know, it can be on the warrant, but we're supposed to follow the process. I think if we cut it for three weeks, it'll just give us a little more time to deal with anything we have to. And if we need to add articles as a select board, we can always open and close the warrant at any given meeting and adjust it or add to it. We just need to give them enough time to write it up and have it posted.
So that would bring it to May 13.
Okay, and it's what, seven days posting we need before the meeting?
Yep.
But, yeah, that would give you basically two weeks to make sure the drafts are all done and ready to be posted, so that's, I think that's, I feel better with that than cutting that whole down a week. Dylan, any further thoughts with that?
Well, three works, three weeks sounds good. If we go with the 13th, that would be three weeks and two days.
Maureen, any thoughts on it?
I certainly would, you know, follow your suggestions, as you have much more experience than I do on the warrant issue.
All right, I appreciate that. I'll look for a motion then for the warrant. We call them out though, we're gonna...
I'm sorry?
We always read them out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just because we're changing what's written to be three weeks, so we'll see if Dylan will spit one out for us.
So the days would be open today?
I'll make a motion, oh, sorry.
You can go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, make a motion that we open the, open the warrant for the annual town meeting today at the board of selectmen meeting and closing at end of day on May 13.
Second.
Motion to second to open the warrant today and end it on the 13th of May at 5:00 for end of business? If I can make that?
Okay, amend it to 5:00.
Thank you.
5:00 on May 13.
So we have motion to second to open the warrant today and close on May 13 at 5:00. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Clark, aye.
And aye? And then we've got to set the date of the meeting as well, please, and location. Has the location, Jessica, been determined to be anyplace particularly yet?
It will be either between Quavon Outdoors again or at Revel's Lane. Is that something that Joshua decides on, or...
Josh, he has some input. We talked with the school, we talked with the superintendent, talked with the principal. I think people liked it outdoors, and now that we have the tents, I would like to use them. I mean, it's usually good weather, and at least if we have tents, a little rain won't hurt us. We can enclose a couple up front for the boards and for the election people, workers, getting people signed in, checked in from the clerk's office. So why don't we go ahead and set a date, but not set the location yet? And once again, well, before we do it, let's discuss the time, because this is something we always kick around. If we do it too early, people can't get home from work, and we go too late, these meetings run late. And the other option, we did a special town meeting on a Saturday, but I think we struggled for turnout on a Saturday, so I, as much as I enjoy that midday attempt to do it, I think it's unwise. So tradition, I think, we usually go for about 6:00 or 6:30. I haven't, I have to look at the history, but I think 6:00 o'clock might be a good time, gives an hour for people to get home and settle in, and it keeps us from going too late.
I'm amenable to whatever you suggest.
Well, whatever you feel too. Your opinions is valuable as mine here. If you hear anything different from people. Paul, you probably have an opinion on it. What do you think?
I think you should keep it what it was generally. I thought it was okay. As you said, give it the time to get home and where they're at, and hopefully it doesn't run too long.
So I think we were typically doing 6:30.
6:30.
We can do that. It's, just hope we don't run long. We shouldn't run as long as we have. The couple last years, all the bylaw issues for marijuana really dragged it out in discussion, so hopefully it won't be too late, so I would propose then that we post the date for the annual town meeting as...
June 15.
Thank you, I'm going to find the page. At June 15 at 6:30, location to be announced.
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second to establish a town meeting for June 15 at 6:30, location to be announced. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Clark, yes.
Okay. So, why don't we listen to Rick and Paul for their bylaw amendment? Please present, gentlemen.
May I approach?
Please.
I only have one, sorry. This, this was emailed?
They do have printed out copies in front of them.
It just has a bigger map, but it's so, and it's outlined completely in green. So the purpose of this is to reverse what they did when they originally did the bylaws in 1972 and made that whole section down there at Barry Plains, limited business. The only business that I never knew of was the hair cutting place. Was there another one?
Well, the limited business would be, they have an eye or eye doctor or something down there, don't they?
Oh, but he's on the other side.
He's on the other side of the road.
He's on the other side.
Where is this? The stretch of Main Street, like near, near the swamp on both sides?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
And then turn the corner and covers all the way past to the ball field.
Yep.
So it's the ball field, the fire station, Fritter Road, and up to what used to, I'm old, what used to be Gromos.
Yep. Yeah, where the roof, where...
The roofs.
So you can still have residential there?
We want, yes, you can still have residential there. From my client's perspective, there's no purpose to have it, limited business. I don't know why they did it to begin with, because there are no businesses there. It's town property, and then everything else is built upon, and it's all residential housing. So the selfish perspective for my client is he'll have another house lot.
Oh, I see.
He owns the house on the corner, and it actually used to be, it actually is two lots. His deed is two separate parcels. There actually used to be a house on the other parcel that's vacant there, so he's simply trying to get it zoned what it should be, which is residential, because that's what it is, and I don't think it'll ever be business, it's town property and residential.
So what is it, a lot size difference for...
Oh, yeah, it's, I think it's almost twice.
Okay, so the short line is, he's looking to be able to split a lot and put another house up?
Correct. And it's actually, like I said, it's actually, I think I included a copy of his plan in the documents that I just submitted today, which shows that his lots are originally two parcels and it's, it's split in two.
I think this is, this is his parcel here.
Okay, that's a piece I found online.
Yeah, and then there was a little barber shop there one time, a long time ago, but that is now a residence.
Yeah, there's a couple houses here, and I know the Fritter's back here, so...
And then this is rental property.
Seems like an odd place to have business.
So that's the house he owns now on the corner, and that's the secondary parcel from way back when.
Okay, and...
So that, the change could be the dotted line sort of...
These are all residents now.
...of that corner plot, is that right?
That would be, if the zoning change occurs, that would be the secondary lot, correct?
What he would do is, when he's going to put a house right in here, across the way there's another residence, like, as I said, all residents on both sides of that street.
Right, except for where there's a swamp on the other side.
Right, the swamp, so, and so I was looking at the map, like, that's a tiny little piece, and it's, I didn't understand, because I know Fritter Road, it's all houses.
Right.
But it will be a tiny piece that he's going to put a house on, but...
True, but it's, and it's not that looks different than all the houses on for two hours.
There are small plots.
And I will tell you, I don't know if you're familiar with Mr. Lindstrom, but he buys and flips houses, and he's done probably four to six in Barry, and he's put more money into tax rolls. He's bought some pretty sketchy properties in Barry.
We have a few left.
Clean them up.
We have a few left.
Yeah, and cleaned them up, and he does, he does a nice job, I guess.
Rick, could you just let me know a couple of the properties that you've already worked with?
52 Summer.
Okay.
17 Main Street. The other one on Summer Street, 106 Summer Street.
Wasn't there, was it Loring Road?
Yeah, Loring Road. And currently we're going one on Burnin' Out.
Good luck with that.
There's one I couldn't find, it stuck to the R.
So every, every property that I bought was, they were pent, fullways. Somebody threw the keys on the table and left, you know, six dumpsters, lots of work, but now...
A lot of them need that.
With the real estate properties coming up, the taxes, it can only better the town because we've got a tax base, we're sitting there doing nothing.
One thing I would just ask, and this is only out of ignorance, so please excuse the, I'm new at this. This article that the selectmen will look at is only for us to place it on the warrant, is it correct?
Correct.
We don't have any authority to approve your request, just to get it on the warrant?
Correct, no. Frankly, the reason we're here is because the statute requires that it be presented to the board of selectmen, and the board of selectmen, as you said, then pass it on to the planning board. Rick has already been to the planning board, but we're going there again tonight just to let him know we're here.
Okay.
So the, yeah, the formal process is that present to us, even if they're going to place it on, they present to us, and we have a timeline which we must present it to the planning board, which we'll do immediately, then they have a timeline to have two public hearings on it.
Actually, it's only one public hearing, but it has to be published in the newspaper twice.
Oh, okay, one public hearing. So they'll have that, and then they have something like 30 days total to give us their recommendation on it. But if he gathers 10 signatures, he puts it on the warrant no matter what, it's got nothing to do with us, because this is an annual warrant. If this was a special town meeting, we'd take 100 signatures, but this takes just 10. We could place it on the warrant, and it would be our article, but it's not, so we will let them place it on the warrant. I'm sure they'll get 10 signatures in five minutes. But I think it's a great idea. I support housing development in town, and I support people making money, so I'm happy to see it, and we will forward this to the planning board, Jessica, as soon as possible, please.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dylan, do you have any input or anything else, sir?
No, I'm just glad to see potential for some new growth in town, so...
I don't know if we need a formal vote, but I feel more comfortable taking one on it before I just say we're passing on. Make sure we cross all of our Ts and D's and D's and R's, so I make a motion that we pass this on to the planning board.
I second that suggestion.
I have motion to second to pass this article for the zoning bylaw change to the planning board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Clark, yes.
All right, so it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Have a good time at the planning board.
See, that's just, that's the process. Even if we want to create a bylaw, once we create the bylaw we want, we have to give it to the planning board.
Yeah, right.
And they can't stop it.
And it goes to town meeting.
Right, they can support it, make suggestions to it, whatever, but they give their recommendation back to us, and then we can place it on the warrant or not, because there's times we might want to amend and make a bylaw change.
Agreed.
So we're up to Chief Carbone for next. We have 20 minutes. He's here for, oh, license plate reader, that'll be interesting.
Yes, and it looks like he just needed to take a phone call, so...
Personnel classifications, reclassifications of town administrator, administrative assistant, and police department administrative assistant. So that would be Sandy and Amy.
Yeah.
It looks like they'd be moving to the same designation as Shannon is now at the DPW.
Right, so that was the police chief and I's justification for recommending this. I mean, now that we're, you know, in budget season, we're looking at, you know, step increases, where people are at, and also just over the couple of new hires that we've had this year, I've had to reference our wage and comp plan, and one of the first things I noticed was that our, my assistant, the police chief's assistant, are both at a lower class than the DPW's assistant, and we just didn't know what the reasoning behind that was, and we both feel that, you know, they deal, both of our assistants deal with highly confidential information, and they work, you know, 35, 40 hours a week, so it's...
Possibly a high volume of work, too, during the day.
Yeah, it's a high stress level, you know, they're two of the most public facing assistants in the town, and so we feel like to make them a little more competitive, and for equity reasons, we believe that they should be moved to a different classification.
Okay, so then the classification would be what, from, so you, I see where you're in yellow.
Yes.
And you're moving not, not to a different step, but to a different classification?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so they would remain in the same step, so Sandy is currently...
The other highlighter went down below, is that they go comparable to that assistant for the DPW.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, so Sandy is currently a step two, and then Amy is at the top of the step, she's step eight, because she's done with the town for about 30 years, so they would just move over to...
Number five.
Number five, to be more equitable.
Okay.
And I believe it would be, I have the numbers upstairs, I totally forgot them when I was running down here.
Both of their jobs right now pay about $35,000 a year, and that's embarrassing for what they do.
I certainly would move the reclassification of the town administrator assistant and the assistant to the police department from class three to class five, as shown in the documents provided by Jessica Sizer.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Thank you. I have motion to second to approve the reclassification from class three to five for the administrative assistants. Any further discussion?
I'd just add to that with our thanks.
And I just want to add that this will be implemented for FY '22, just clarify.
Why don't we have that full motion then, just to make clear on that, that it's for FY '22?
Please add to my motion the, to approve the reclassification as shown in our documents presented by Jessica Sizer, and to understand that the reclassification from class three to class five for those individuals will coincide with the beginning of FY '22.
Thank you. So we have motion to second, and further discussion was to just add that the classification starts in 2022 fiscal year. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Clark, yes.
And yes. Thank you. Chief, why don't we deal with you quickly, since you're here again and back in the room, and we'll get on to these others after. Tell us about your mounted license plate reader.
Right, so basically, you're familiar with license plate readers being on the back of cars, and that's a rather expensive proposition, roughly $20,000, but we have the opportunity to get into a plate reader that's mounted, pole-mounted, and that costs much less, like $2,500. So we're looking at doing it, we think that it's beneficial to the town, it puts us, it's constant, it's all the time, it's not limited to whether or not a police cruiser happens to be out, because they don't run 24/7, the camera would, we could put it on a main thoroughfare. I can name a dozen cases this past year that would have been maybe solved, definitely we would have had a better investigation if we had had eyes on that particular main road, because we know that the suspects came and went by the main road. So it's good for us, I think it's good for the town, but I don't want to be the guy that says, you know, big brother's watching, I want to make sure that everybody's okay with, you know, in government, that we are doing, we have to ask the state for use of a telephone pole on a main state road, and we'd like to put it up, but I don't want to put it up if there's, anybody has concerns about that.
So the intent of this, if I get it right, is to have a camera that reads license plates?
Yes.
Stores the data for...
30 days.
Okay, thank you. For 30 days, and this is something to be reviewed regularly?
No.
In other words, if someone drives by with a, with a, you know, expired registration by six months, is it going to pick them up?
Yes, so what we do is we set the parameters. Is there any, any number of violations from the registered owner has an expired license, the vehicle's license is suspended, the most severe being it's stolen, and then, of course, anything that would hit an amber alert or silver alert or any of those things. So we decide based on how often we get, if we do unregistered vehicles and we find out we're getting 40 a day, it's going to be too much for us to handle, so...
But that's a big problem, we have 40 unregistered vehicles a day, because that usually means they're running short, and that's, that's what really...
So we have to determine what we can handle, because what it'll do is it'll send us an alert, and then we have to check it against, it gets updated every day, and that's one of the beauties of these, is they automatically update, so you pay for that. But what it really does is it, so we don't review it. It sends us a signal, dispatch gets the signal, we get the signal, then our guys verify the information off of an active computer, and then we go looking for the vehicle or if we're in the area. So that's the only review, but what we have the ability to do, since it's stored for 30 days, if we had a shoplifting at the grocery store and we got a description of a vehicle, now we can go back to that timeframe, we can pull those, that tape, and we can look at every vehicle that went under that. So, and the things that you tend to do is, you tend to start looking for the bigger stuff, stolen cars, amber alerts, silver alerts, those types of things, and then see how, you know, see how you handle that, and then you start expanding it to say suspended licenses and suspended registers, to see how much you can actually be affected with, you know, and how much we can handle is what we'll do, and then it goes on, you pick a particular pole, but if you want to change it to another pole, it's a $300 fee to change it, and I don't know that we would, but there could be a situation where we decide it's worth the 300 to move it someplace because we have an issue, so it's not, it can't, it can be moved, and if it gets damaged or destroyed, and this is the beauty of it, I think we pay $150 replacement fee, whereas if something happens to the car cameras, well, then something has to be done through your car insurance and all that goes with that, so that makes it a low risk for us.
Okay.
So, so it's a, it's an upfront cost of $2,500?
That's per year.
We must pay a monthly fee?
That's a, no, that's per year, the $2,500.
Okay.
So if a, if a car camera costs $20,000, and we're going to get the latest technology for $2,500 a year, and we know that car cameras, at best, the technology's good for five years, and it might be three, before they've just advanced it, we know that we're ahead of the technology, so that the car camera will be obsolete long before this, you know, 2,500 times, what, 10 years? So, so in 16 years, I think, you know, or I mean, eight years, we're running ahead of the curve, we're running ahead of the cost, and we're staying, we're staying on top of technology, so I think this is a win-win. It doesn't allow us to go through parking lots and things like that, but it does allow us to cover a road, and we know it would be Worcester Road, you know, because we figure that's what we, absolutely our, that's going to be our absolute main thoroughfare into town, so...
One concern for myself, it's happened to me, it's probably happened to everyone, you've missed an insurance payment, your insurance lapses, and they cancel your register something, and you don't even know about it.
Right.
And I've, I mean, I've had my registration expire, and I see it a month later, I'm like, oh geez.
Well, so you know, right now...
You'd hope that people get a phone call and a warning, you don't just hunt them down and, hey...
Right now, everybody that lives in this town that has that issue happen, we get a notification every day that tells us if a local person has a lapse of their license or their registration, and that is what we do. We look at it, and to date, we haven't gone after anybody, because it's so easy for them to be reminded and updated.
My toughest thing, I think, is the insurance bill comes, it goes, gets sent to a junk mail, so you don't get your bill.
Right.
But then when they cancel it, they send you a written notice, but you usually have time, so you can get back and pay it and not get canceled, but...
Yeah, no, they started about, it's, it's, six months ago, it's called a CIGIS notification, and I get them every day, five times a day.
That's my one concern, we get people that are...
Right.
Not intending...
Absolutely.
...to do something wrong.
And again, we, we want to start with what we really want to get, is we want to get the major, the major, I've...
We know, I know we have enough incidents in town for...
We, you know, we want to know, do we have stolen cars driving through our town, you know, is that a problem? Because, you know, we're not necessarily going to stop, you know, get behind every car, and I've, I've used a system like this before, where it's on the car, and you really literally have to decide what you want to, otherwise it goes off, everywhere you drive, it's just going off, going off, going off, so you kind of have to pick what, what is important to us right now, and, and only really focus on that, or otherwise it just always goes off.
It's always a mission. So the big question is, are you here looking for money, or just looking for approval? Because I would, this I would like to see out of your budget, not...
It's out of our budget, and I'm not necessarily looking for approval, what I'm looking for is pushback. If you didn't want me to do it, if you felt it was an imposition, then I wouldn't do it. If you feel like it's okay, then I'm going to go ahead with it.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
So, so you reserve the right to start using it for other sorts of infractions later down the road, like speeding and things like that?
No, 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 it doesn't do that, we, you know, we have...
It doesn't do that?
Doesn't do any of that, it records the plate of the car that comes through, and if they have a status violation, instead, you know, then it, it lets us know. So realistically, we reserve the right to move the pole and to narrow the search, to, to maybe, you know, one week we want to go after unregistered cars, and we're going to do that, you know.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I don't have any, any negative comments or concerns, Maureen?
No.
Dylan?
No, I think that this sound seems reasonable to me.
And I think most people will, most people who are paying their insurance, which is not inexpensive in Massachusetts, and take the time to do things right and have their car protected, they'd like to make sure, I would hope, that others in the road have the same insurance and are protecting them from, you know, Massachusetts is one of the few states that makes sure that everybody's insured to drive. You go to New Hampshire, you don't know what you're getting. It'd be nice to ensure that people coming through town are insured. But it's a good idea, okay? Thank you.
We'll be forward to it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Good night, chief.
All right, Library Board of Trustees, Lisa Marcel.
Yes, I believe David...
Dave Shams.
...is here. I'll just go in. I don't know if he wants us to mention anything, if not, I'll just go over.
Yeah, I was going to say, walk us through quickly, please, we just got...
Yeah, so, um, the Library Board of Trustees lost Lester Paquin.
Hello?
David, welcome.
Lisa Marcel has put her name forward to take the, take the unfulfilled, the unexpired term of Lester Paquin, his term expires in two thousand and twenty, and, um, the, the board met last Wednesday night, a number of the staff members in the library independently put her name forward, the board trustees unanimously recommended that she be appointed by the select board, she has been, apparently she was a, a former fire ass committee chairman in town and secretary, she's a member of the historical society, she volunteered at the library, she slept folks when it was being flooded in the children's section, and we would recommend that the board of trustees, board of selected, approve her appointment to fulfill Lester's unexpired term through the, through two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, David.
I'd move that Lisa Marcel be appointed to fill the unexpired term of Lester Paquin to end on twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion, please.
There's a motion as second for Lisa to fill the seat from Lester, and, which expires in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Do we have any further discussion about that or comments? Hearing none, then, I will call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, Dylan Clark.
I'd like to thank Lisa for stepping up and filling your position, we appreciate it, I always like when someone comes forward to take any of these boards and committees in town, because participation from the population is what keeps us together and going well here.
I want to thank the select board, and I'll definitely convey your sentiments to Lisa when we tell them that she's been appointed, thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, David.
Okay, next, resignation of Jim Pearson from the Fire Station Building Committee.
Yes, he sent a, an email to us, he has a really good job at Massport, and he got promoted to an even better job at Massport, and so while his knowledge is very valuable for this process, we hope that we can continue to use his, you know, his services ad hoc, so to speak, but he can't participate fully anymore, so he sent us this letter of his resignation.
We certainly appreciate his participation, especially to this point, and I see we have a recommendation to appoint Rich Glidden to the committee. I know when the committee formed, we, I think we had one extra person, they resigned, so we had no extra people on the committee, I believe, so it was very slim.
Right.
Rich Glidden, of course, he is a firefighter, or at least was or is, he is local with his business in New Braintree series around, and he knows about the area, he knows about the needs, so I think between the working knowledge of fire and working knowledge of the town itself, he's, he's a good addition to the committee.
And he expressed interest as well, before, before we knew that the, there was going to be a vacancy, he was already talking with Chief Raskowski about his continued interest in the committee, so...
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or wisdom to share?
Are you entertaining a motion, Mr. Chair?
I am.
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Richard Glidden to the Fire Station, Fire Station Building Committee.
I'm sticking.
Thank you, we have a motion as second to appoint Rich Glidden to the Fire Station Building Committee, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, Dylan Clark.
Thank you very much. Well, we can do a couple of things quickly here, again, we have another five minutes. Chapter ninety expenditure to approve a hundred thousand dollars on Williamsville Road for engineering. As you know, Dylan, we've been trying to get the paving going on Williamsville Road, but first we need to get the drainage fixed, I believe, two months prior, we had a discussion, and they were planning to get going on it in the spring, as soon as the ground thawed, and we had discussed that a proper, full engineering schematics was something in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Since the town will be doing that drainage work, they thought at the time it would be sufficient, knowing the size of pipes that were recommended, that we could do it ourselves without paying for that engineering. However, Jason has talked to the engineers, and they said those recommendations were just sort of, you know, numbers they threw out there rather loosely without investigating it, and given the cost of the whole project, it would be wise to get some engineering to get the, the fill and the pipes and certain items taken care of, and that expense will run us a hundred thousand dollars. It is chapter ninety funds, we do have over a million dollars still in the chapter ninety funds account, so we can afford to do so, and if we don't move sooner rather than later, this paving project's not going to happen this year. So that's why it's on there, so I look for a motion, and we could discuss in the interim.
I did attend the DPW meeting with Mr. O'Sullivan the other evening, and indeed, we had a long conversation about this, so I would move that we approve the use of one-hundred-thousand dollars of chapter ninety monies to do engineering on the Williamsville Road project, which is in awful need of help.
It is.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve a hundred thousand for Williamsville Road engineering, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, Clark.
And it should be noted, we're hoping Jason may come back, he's going to talk to some of our other engineers that we have on, on file, I should say, that are approved engineers, he may be able to get a better quote from another one, but that was the number that we have for the first person. If he can get a better cost somewhere else, he said he would, but this at least proves enough funds to make sure we can get it done and not delay the project. Next is approved paving for Old Cobrook Road, we'd had some discussion at DPW meetings for it, the currently paved section of Old Cobrook Road, they'd like to repave it, it's in decrepit condition, we've had people write us letters about it, and it's something that apparently, they're planning to do the Ruggles Lane parking lot when school closes, I believe we said, sometime in June, and he's hoping that while they're here, to knock off some other projects to make it more worthwhile for company coming out, so it'll be a good time to pick off Old Cobrook Road. The expense isn't written in here, it was fifty, about fifty-one thousand, I don't remember the exact number, we need that, though.
Yeah, I don't remember if we talked...
I, I gave you the exact when I came in, but I didn't bring it with me today.
Let me see if I can, if I have any history on this.
Because I know, and I gave you the specifics in the office, the exact dollar in that, the hundred thousand in this, and the other one, but it doesn't matter if it's, if it's off, we could maybe text Jason and see if he can give us the exact or Shannon, if, I don't know if we could hold a Shannon at this hour.
Actually, I'm making sure.
We could approve a number that I know is in excess, which would cover it, I know it was in the fifties, so we could approve up to sixty thousand for paving, and then that would certainly cover the expense, because we've got, we have to put a dollar sign on this.
I think if you do in excess, it would be okay.
All right, so I'd propose we approve for the paving, repaving of the paved section of Old Cobrook Road, that we approve sixty thousand dollars of chapter ninety funds, up to sixty thousand.
Not to exceed...
Not to exceed sixty thousand, that, that should cover, and if I'm wrong, we'll be back here again in two weeks, but I believe that was enough.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion as second to approve up to sixty thousand dollars for the repaving of the paved portion of Old Cobrook Road, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Clark, yes.
And I'll squeeze one more in, well, I won't. It is quarter past seven, so we'll see if we have the personnel here we want for the discussion on the shared EMS services or municipal agreement. Hardwick. That's a lot of roads in the middle of nowhere, and I would think Ware would be closer.
Well, that is a lot of roads.
If you notice, if, if you've ever driven these, I don't know if you have, but all those, all those take us five...
You're talking about Bus Route Queen, I know all these roads.
Those take us five to ten minutes to get to, they're, they're, they are tough to get to for us.
They're tough to get to, and they're...
And then you're taking the worst part back to the center of their town in some cases.
And not only that, they're in terrible shape, most of them.
And Ware, I mean, I got to think that Ware could get at least...
I don't think it's that they don't like Ware, I think Ware's just too expensive for them, and they're looking for a more cost-effective, at least that's what I gather from...
Well, we'll see what, we'll see what happens, they do have a fire station right about here.
I know, yeah.
So unless it means us staffing the fire station.
Yeah.
But once again, if, if we're going to staff the fire station, we're going to have to get that cost...
Get a whole lot more money than they're looking at.
Well, Chief Fregowski have a better idea, part of what we've done since he's become chief, and they've had him absorb the ambulance, we've been giving him additional funds, first of all, for a fire inspector.
Yeah.
Because that's a full-time position to do the fire inspections, and he's also code enforcement, so he can actually issue fines now, which he'd never been able to do before. The second position, he has a full-time firefighter position, which I originally thought was going to be pretty, and just different people filling the shifts, but he has one person in there to fill those hours, and that gives us the ability to stack, staff a second ambulance call. So once the medics go out, and if another call comes in, it's BLS, we can take the second ambulance and make the call, or if the first one's BLS, the medic can stay behind, and even the chief can drive at them to make a second call, so the ability to make dual calls is huge.
Yes.
It happens literally hundreds of times a year, and at a thousand dollars a pop, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, so that, and even if you collect half of that, it's, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars or more than pays for the position there.
Yeah, oh, I'm not worried about the position, I'm worried about making certain that when we can cover the community that we have, and if we're continuing our association with New Braintree, and taking on that particular section of Hardwick.
It's going to mean staffing, I would think.
I agree.
I haven't, I haven't talked to the chief, I don't know anything about this side of this.
Okay, I don't either, so that...
But I would anticipate staffing, and, and the problem is going to be more...
And maybe a relocation of some equipment.
We're going to need two to stay here to come here to New Braintree, they're going to need an ambulance there, so if they don't provide one with the town, that's going to be the issue, that's, that's a huge expense.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you're right, but I don't, I don't know that much about it either, so...
So I know that their select board needs to open their meeting before we start this, so just...
Okay, and is Chief Fregowski available or on, or...
He is actually away this week.
Is he?
School vacation.
True.
You know, so maybe kids are doing some stuff with families.
I would have thought he would have been here for this discussion, because I certainly wouldn't enter in any agreement without discussing with the chief and getting a...
Well, I suspect we're not even close to an agreement.
Sometimes you be surprised how things come in here, we, I fought for a year to, I kept throwing stuff out when people didn't come ready, because we kept putting issues off, well, we'll accept that and let them get this stuff fixed later, I said, no, just, just stop taking up the agenda until it's, it's ready, and it's, it's streamlined things a bit, but stuff like this, we need discussions, obviously.
Well, we can continue on, I guess. Look at Groven Road.
Do you know when they're planning to open, are they going to notify you, or...
I was just waiting for the opportunity to speak, I didn't want to speak over your side.
Oh, I apologize, we were just cross-talking because we didn't think you were ready, I'm, I'm sorry.
Would it be seven nineteen on Tuesday, April twentieth, I'd like to open the Library Board of Selectment meeting, for the purpose of a joint discussion with the town of Barry for EMS services. Thank you. So we're here before you, Chief Fregowski had provided, provided us a proposal for EMS services for a portion of, of our town, not the entire town, and there's been talk going back and forth with MAP, and I wasn't aware he wasn't going to be here either, but I think we can maybe just get the conversation rolling. Julie Wink has played an intricate part in talking to all the departments between Ware and Barry and also Westbrook Field, so, you know, we're just looking to get your input so that we can make our decision as to what services we're going to go forward with.
Okay. How is Ware charging you now, by population, by mileage of road, by call, how are they forming their, their fee charge structure?
Julie, can I defer to you?
Sorry, sorry, thank you, thanks for the opportunity to be in front of you and to have the discussion. So just a quick background, I think, just a little history, since you're sort of new to this topic, we are not new to this topic, Hardwick has not had its own ambulance for at least four years, we're working on, I think, our fourth year, it was not sustainable, it was a private nonprofit organization, and was not sustainable. So what ended up happening is, we are, four years ago, we were approached by Ware, and thankfully, Ware had been providing mutual aid for the town department for a long time, and so Ware came forward with a contract, and we've been contracting with Ware for our EMS services for the town, we're in our fourth year of a three-year contract, so, and exploring other opportunities has, you know, any, any good solution or plan B sort of, in the event that Ware couldn't provide services, we've been sort of talking about this for almost a year now, and the discussion of late has come, so we have spoken with Westbrook Field, we have spoken with Chief Fregowski, of late Jessica has arranged meetings with some folks from the town of Ware, including the chief, and also our Hardwick chief, and also Chief Fregowski, town administrator, so there's been a, a lot of healthy discussion around what would be the best for the town of Hardwick. Ware has come back and decided that, given Hardwick a proposal, that they will cover part of the town or none of the town, so they are not interested in providing full service for the town. We currently pay them an assessment, it's no secret, we pay them seventy-seven thousand dollars to provide EMS services for the town, they bill the third-party insurance companies and patients directly, we are not involved, we are basically providing a fee for the service. Originally, when the contract started, we were paying sixty thousand a year, and then it's jumped to seventy-seven thousand. Hardwick, as in most communities, sort of have, are having to watch our pennies up late, and so looking for, you know, an alternative that makes sense for our residents, makes sense for surrounding services, and also makes sense for us fiscally, so that we can continue to provide the level of care that our residents are used to. With that, I approached Chief Fregowski quite a while ago, and I also approached Dan McCall, who's from the Westbrook Field EMS, to somehow see if they could partner with Hardwick and figure out a plan where we could have, you know, advanced life services for the town residents, and, you know, a service that makes sense, not knowing what the outcome was with Ware, Ware came back to us originally with a very, our assessment almost doubled, which for Hardwick was not sustainable at that point. As a board, I'm, I'm sure, as you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that we have emergency services for our residents, and so that's sort of why we're here, we're looking to see, we're hoping that perhaps Barry would consider partnering with Hardwick, Barry already is responding to calls in Hardwick, Barry is responding to more and more calls in Hardwick that Ware is not able to cover. Westbrook Field is not an advanced life service, they're a basic life service, so if there is any call requiring advanced life care, Ware or Barry would typically respond to provide that level, because both are medic. I know that's a long answer to your question, but to give you some sort of other facts, in looking at call volumes from June of nineteen through May of twenty, we have about, we had about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-sixty-one calls for service in town, that's average, we average anywhere between two-hundred-and-thirty to two-hundred-and-seventy calls a year, of that, about a hundred calls are in the wheelwright section. Of that, about 100 calls are in the Wheelwright section or this section. I provided to Jessica a map and also a street listing of streets that we thought might make sense if Barry is willing to work with us to cover that portion. For that time period, that would equate to about 100 calls. With that in mind, most of those calls, the majority of the calls, are on the Barry Road, in the Barry Road area. And also, we have Quaman Estates, which is an elderly facility in Wheelwright. Those are the majority of the Wheelwright calls. So they are very close, in close proximity to Barry. We do have Stragglers, as you know, Barry as well. We have a pretty sort of diverse geography in Hardwick. We don't think...and this is for a discussion. I think Ware was hopeful that Ware would cover the west part of Hardwick and Gilbertville section of Hardwick, and perhaps Barry would cover the Wheelwright or Barry-facing, Barry-touching parts of Hardwick. And that's really what we're here to talk about.
Couple questions. Do you know what percentage of your calls are typically covered by insurance and paid for, and what portion are not?
We do not have that information, since we're not involved in the billing, unfortunately. I can absolutely request that from Ware, because Ware is currently doing all of that work.
Because, I mean, even if we just said roughly $1,000 a call for an ambulance trip, ALS can go much higher. BLS, I think, is $900 and change. There's $100,000 potential there for revenue. If it was...and this, I guess, from the hip, because I haven't followed the numbers careful enough. If there was just a 50% recovery, that would mean a $50,000 intake for the town. So we...you know, if we're looking at a $50,000 potential intake, what kind of expense do we incur? I don't know if the chief, because I haven't talked to him. I'd be concerned if we were considering doing this with the existing two ambulances, if we need a third bus. Certain times, our ambulances are out, and I hear it probably at least once a week, because I have my pager on, that we have both ambulances out, and we still have to call mutually for a third call. It's difficult to hear when it's someone from our own town calls, and we have to get mutulating, because both our ambulances are already out. One's in New Braintree and one's already gone from town. And it's difficult to explain to the people why we don't have an ambulance for their family in town, but we've gone to a different one. So I don't know. That's my concerns. Dr. Marsh and I have talked about this briefly beforehand. Is...do we need another ambulance to make this realistic? And that's where the concern comes in, because that's expensive. That, you know, as you probably are aware, an ambulance runs, you know, someplace in the mid $400,000s. And if they have a five-year expectancy, they run about $80,000 a year. So it doesn't make sense for us to spend $80,000 a year for an ambulance if it's only gonna bring in $50,000. That's certainly not a moneymaker at all. It's a money loser, unless there was a contribution from your town to make up the difference. What can I ask was the cost? What was it costing when you had private service coverage in town? How did they structure that fee? Did they have an annual expense for you, an assessment, or how did the private service work?
So that's sort of the crux of the issue. The town was not really funding the private service. So the private service was existing on its own. The town was providing towards the end of...the service was in place for quite a number of years, I think the '60s or '70s, and just wasn't sustainable anymore on its own with the requirements of, you know, medical services and coverage and such. So I think the last year or two, the town was providing some support. I think no more than $25,000 to $30,000 was being provided to the organization. One thing I can tell you, so statistically, there was a committee that was...the contract was negotiated with Ware. There was a committee, it was, you know, for lack of a better word, called the Ambulance Committee. And there were representatives from both communities and, I think, a representative at large. Some of the issues we talked about were finances, calls for service, how service was going. What we understood from their statistics is that our call reimbursement and our assessment were really providing a significant amount of financial support for their fire department. So our per-call realization was higher than their own. And so, quite honestly, I think that's why Ware would still like a seat at the table, because I think they may feel some financial strain if we choose to not continue to work with them as a service. So, again, it's their statistics, and it is not the town's. We're not involved in accumulating those. But we do know that they have used some of the excess from that fund to support general fund budget...
Really?
...requirements for the town. So I suspect that...I believe that with the calls, and again, this is covering the entire count, so if we're looking at 261, just looking at my statistics here, if we're looking at 261 calls, and they're covering, you know, that volume, and some of these are refusals and no transports. So that's the total volume, which is what the assessment should cover. So the assessment from the town should cover no transports and refusals and things like that, where there's not the ability to bill potentially. But they were, you know, I believe that they were getting in excess of $150,000 to $160,000 a year insurance receipts. And again, we can get more information, more particular information on that.
Well, that's not far from my half-guess, though.
Julie, are you...when you say that, you know, the Shin Road, the Morin Road, and all those other roads that you've...I don't know, would that be part of the ambulance service that Barry would provide?
I believe so. So the list in the map that you're looking at, we relied on our chief and lieutenant of the police department to come up with those, because they're the ones familiar with the roads. They are typically first on the scene. So they're going to know travel times. So that was sort of the intent of that list. It's a talking list. It can be adjusted, but it was sort of a place to start the conversation.
There's no question that the...from Shin Pike, you know, down to Old Petersam Road, those are rough roads. Those are, you know, they're hard to get to. In the winter, they're very difficult to get to. They're tough to bring school buses down, so I'm guessing they're probably just a challenge for ambulances as well. But we would really need to know more about the enterprise fund that is, you know, how much it grows over in Ware because of the payback from the hybrid clients, because that would be critical to our numbers. And I agree with Mr. O'Sullivan that the need for potentially a satellite ambulance operation to make sure we can get to your calls as fast as they need to be gotten to would worry me a little bit.
Right.
If we were just gonna do, you know, the Wheelwright Oriya, I'd say, piece of cake, because we're right down there. Or we can get right down there, right off Wheelwright Road, but, boy, I don't know, some of these others would be a real stretch to make sure we could get to within a half hour.
The delay for service is a real concern at that point.
So I can tell you when looking at...and I can certainly share this. I will send this over to Jessica. Again, we feel like this is the first of many conversations on how we could make this work. Long-term, I think the goal is that, at least for me, I would like to see an ambulance service back in the Town of Hardwick. That makes the most sense. It should've never left. However, you know, for various reasons, it's not in place anymore. I think, long-term, we'd like to see that come back. But I think it's also...we've regionalized several of our services, and some with the Town of Barry, the building inspector. And so we're sort of seeing long-term solution, that we may come up with a regional-type plan.
Right.
And so I think this is sort of a gateway for that. I can send you the call list from...it's pretty specific. It has the street location, has some specifics as to who transported. You will see Barry's name on here quite frequently, because Barry is providing more coverage for Hardwick than it has in the past. And I think Chief Rogowski can sort of probably corroborate and give you statistics on that better than I. But you will see very few calls on Shin Pike Road.
Right.
The majority of our calls are centered around Barry Road, some on North Road, Delargy Road. So they're very, very close. Again, not the best roads.
No.
But they are...a lot of our...the majority of our calls are sort of central to where it might be easy for Barry to get to the calls. But I'm happy to send this to Jessica, and she can share that.
Thank you very much, Julie. And I agree with you. The idea of regionalization is probably here for all of us. And I applaud the opportunity, or applaud you for giving us an opportunity to take a look at this, to see if it works for, you know, the people and their health and welfare. I worry about the, you know, certainly the Mary Lane issue, that I know we're gonna talk a little bit about. That's kind of...I mean, I certainly agree with the people who wrote up and said, under-resourced, very, very poor rural populations are just getting left behind. And it's more obvious every time I open a document here.
Dylan, any questions or things to add? We haven't heard from you yet. We've been kind of dominating here.
Yeah, nothing more to add. I'm looking forward to having more conversations in the future. Seen some numbers here from our chief, Fanda. Yeah, of course, we want to support our neighbors, and nobody should have to be without basic services like ambulance in the 21st century in the United States of America. So glad that we're working on this together. And other than that, I don't have any specific things to add.
So I'd just add a couple things. People may or may not be aware, with the services we've added to our town and our expense, we're still upside down on our ambulance. It still is a service that the town pays for. It is not covered by receipts between the expense of the ambulances, the expense for medics beyond. Now, Hardwick doesn't have an ALS service level. They wouldn't have to be. They'd have to be EMS level. I don't think we'd have to serve them unless...and I don't know. Because Barry's ALS, we might be required to provide ALS 24 hours, which that could come from our town. But I would suspect for this to work, we'd have to try to staff some EMS level. So perhaps firefighter EMTs. And this is where something might come into your budget, that you might have, as Chief Rogowski did, instead of hiring somebody full-time, you post per diem shifts and have people fill shifts. So they, you know, someone comes in their day off, gets a couple extra hours' pay to be available during the daytime for these calls. But there's certainly a decent amount of money potential. If they're talking $150,000 from the whole town in a year of revenues, if 100 of that goes towards the ambulance, which is realistic, the cost, that only needs $50,000 to put...
Men on the...
Men on, right. And the personnel, I would guess, if you're doing shifts, are probably relatively low. If you're talking a benefited position, you're probably talking $60,000 a year for one. But if you're talking about shifts, you might be talking 30 or 40. So potentially, the town for, let's say it was 35, could maybe spend as little as $20,000 out of pocket and cover those two shifts. Once again, that doesn't do anything for Barry at that point. That just...if that money comes in at $150,000 receipts for the 260 calls, and you guys staffed a couple personnel, I could see a point where it maybe breaks even. But without sounding too harsh on this, it doesn't have anything in it for the Town of Barry. It puts more on our fire chief and more responsibilities in his plating and scheduling, and it doesn't add to us. But I do want to find a way that we can help you, and I hope we can help in a way that does give us some incentive to justify our population, the risk of thinning out our services.
Well, I think Julie mentions that this is a beginning conversation. And Julie, do you have a deal for FY '22, or is this something that really needs to be resolved for FY '22?
So unfortunately, as of late, Ware has just come to the table with us and said that they're not interested in covering the whole town. And so we are facing...and interestingly enough, and so to sort of step back, I will make sure that we get you the correct dollars of...I will ask Ware to update their statistics. I'm sure they'll be very forthcoming with what things look like for them. 150 sticks in my mind, that may be old data. Pay or reimbursements change all the time, so it could be significantly less than that. So I just would want to be fair and get you the accurate numbers. We believe that...we're hoping Ware will sort of hang in with us until we can get this arrangement together. Westbrook Field is still at the table, talking to us. Westbrook Field is very interested in covering part of the town as well. So ideally, we would like to have something in place by July 1st. We are already at April 20th, so that may be a really difficult sort of needle to move for us. But I think as long as we have...and again, it's not a new conversation that we've been having. Sort of the new thing to the plate for us is Ware's position on, you know, what they would like to provide for service. So I think that's where we're at. I think time is of the essence for us, but it needs to sort of...needs to be a good fit for everybody, because it's going to, you know, have a significant impact for all of the players that are at the table.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight and getting this ball rolling. I just...I don't want to sound too negative, but I want to just be open with our concerns.
Sure.
We've had this discussion for other topics in the past. And we certainly need to hear from Chief Rogowski and see his thoughts on it. And I'm sure he'll be candid, whether or not he thinks it's a good idea or a bad idea. There's a difference between "we could probably do it" versus "he wants to do it," and if it's smart. We definitely need his perspective and input on that. I would assume this week, if it's vacation week, we probably lost him for the week to the family. They like to go away and do things. They're pretty active. So I would suspect he won't be around for conversations this week, but hopefully next week.
I can offer a little bit of insight on Chief Rogowski's position. I think that he's very...I mean, he recognizes that if, whether we enter a partnership with Hardwick or not, we're gonna be providing service to them.
Right.
So he wants to make it a formal deal, as long as, you know, he can still provide the best service to the Town of Barry. Something that I've done recently was I applied for an efficiency and regionalization grant that would provide the town with a rapid-response vehicle that would be outfitted with...to do everything except transport a patient. So we've gotten the senator and the representative's support on that grant, and that's, you know, a recent effort that I've made to try and help mitigate the concern that, you know, we all have about only having two ambulances and, you know, two ambulances that don't always work to...not to mention...
We're getting there.
We're almost there. We almost have our new ambulance. But so I, you know, I think that this is a very, you know, much-needed conversation, because the Town of Ware, you know, Hardwick, Barry, we're all very big, spread-out towns. And it was just a lot of heavy lifting for the Town of Ware to cover them themselves, you know, regardless of the, you know, fiscal reasons for the Town of Hardwick to look elsewhere. I just think that the main concern Chief Rogowski has is the potential partnership with Westbrook Field. Just because, you know, Westbrook Field only offers a BLS service at this point, and also they are not a neighboring town. So there's just been a lot of concerns, not to mention just like the reputation of Westbrook Field. He feels that the Town of Hardwick might get hurt worse, you know, if it's...and then he doesn't want to be affiliated necessarily with the Town of Westbrook Field. Or not, it's not the town. It's a private EMS service. But he doesn't want to be affiliated in the event that they can no longer provide the service that they've promised.
It's something, I don't know if everyone's clear on, but the ambulance service cannot deny calls. If somebody calls, we have to give them service. If somebody calls for mutually, we have to go. So part of what I hope everyone in town that's listening understands is, we could go, whether there's an agreement or not, you hope you get paid, but it's better to have a formal understanding and agreement and have personnel and preparedness to cover this. And this is part of why this discussion has to take place, and we have to have some back and forth. And I know Hardwick's always been good at working with us on agreements and do what we can to make it as equitable as we can for Barry. But make no bones about it, if Ware doesn't want to cover that area and they call in for service, we're gonna get the call. And we're gonna be on those roads, and our ambulance will be out of town doing that. So we're gonna need to find a way to make sure we can...
I have a lot of faith in you, Julie, so I look forward to getting the information and the numbers and working alongside the, you know, the chief and Mr. O'Sullivan, who's got some experience on this, and Dylan, who's been working with this. And if we can put a rover on Mars and, you know, get a helicopter to go 10 feet, you know, in another planet, hey, we probably can figure this out.
I think there's a lot of upside for both communities. Similar... Similar to what Jessica was talking about with regard to a vehicle outfitted for Barry, we're also talking about possibilities for Hardwick of, I guess it's called the fly car is the lingo, getting a fly car so that we could potentially be there on scene.
Yeah.
It's nice that all of, you know, we've got some police involvement on our end, we've got fire involvement in all communities. So I think it's a good conversation and, you know, a bunch of brains are a lot better than just, you know, the three of us in Hardwick trying to negotiate and navigate this.
One thing there is.
As an aside, as an aside, Ware will still, if Ware is not selected as a service, which, you know, again, who knows where Ware will land, they are, they still will provide mutual aid. That's sort of where we started with them and that may be where we finish with them, depending, you know, on how agreements work out and such. But they, as, as the chair was mentioning, you know, you would, Barry would be under sort of the same agreement in terms of providing mutual aid if we have mutual aid agreements. So it sort of makes sense from our perspective clearly because we need the service, but also to have the collective conversation because Barry will be in Hardwick and Ware will be in Hardwick, likely providing mutual aid in whatever capacity.
And this quick response vehicle they talk about, the idea would be, as I said, you can't transport, but it's basically equipped as an ambulance. So it gets people the service quickly. So it allows you to get out there and start caring for the patient. That could be an IV, it could be a splint. I mean, there's a lot of things that could be that they're doing that they can get hands on and start some sort of service before the transport gets there. And getting there quicker is what we're talking about with this distance. So those sprint cars or first service cars are going to be crucial, as well as, I don't know what you guys have available, but having, you know, qualified EMTs available within your police and fire department. If you don't have it, trying to get people certified to have personnel available to get that, that service quickly. So the transport is, you know, going to go when it gets there and minimize the time.
Right.
But I, I think we've discussed plenty for now. I don't know if anybody else has anything quick, I'd be glad to entertain it, but I do want to move on.
So Julie, you'll get that data for us from Ware as fast as you can to get to Jessica and the chief?
Is there anything, any other information that you can think of tonight that you may want us to get to you?
Really, I need to wait and hear from the chief and see what his concerns are. Mine, I think, are all pretty clear, that, you know, maybe a site location there, quick response vehicle, possibly staffing full-time, extra personnel.
Yeah.
You know, if we have that quick response vehicle and we put yet another firefighter EMT on full-time in Barry, if he's got a per diem shift, it might be as little as $30,000 expense, and then the personnel's available to go there in the response vehicle. So, but that's, I don't know what the chief's planning, I have no idea, I haven't even discussed it with him at all.
So maybe we can circle back with you folks in a couple of weeks at an upcoming meeting?
Certainly, we can put this on for the first meeting in May, which is going to be the third. If you want to come back, May 3rd, we can try to.
Have the chief.
Put some pressure on him and get an answer, and at least continue the discussion in some form.
Right, just keep it, keep the ball rolling, that would be great.
Keep it on, keep it on the burner.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Do they have to adjourn before we?
Yep.
Too much for your time, I just have to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, our meeting, Hardwick, Corus, live meeting at 7:50.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay, next up for us was going to be the approval of paving of Grogan Road. This is something the select board approved to be paved last year. That approval has been verified and approved by the state, so the funds are available to pave Grogan Road. While we postponed because we had some letters coming in with both sides' concerns for paving and not paving, and we held a meeting at the Department of Public Works Commission meeting and invited people to come to the meeting. The only persons that came to the meeting were two, to oppose the paving, and the biggest concern we had aired was the drainage possible problems on one end of the road. The select board at that time deferred to that whole committee to vote as a committee on paving and not paving at that time, and they decided to not pave at that time. At that point, I did let them know as chairman of the board that it was still my intent to follow through with the paving this spring, or at this point, probably in June, when the pavers are out here. There were three members that had concerns, two of the three have met with Department of Public Works foreman, I should say superintendent, and their concerns have been alleviated. The third person he's trying to meet with. So it looks like the concerns for drainage have been addressed. After that meeting, we had about five people write us letters, like, why aren't you paving our road? Well, the answer was, you didn't come to the meeting. We sent them, we delivered mail to all of them to make sure they knew of this meeting to come voice their opinion. They didn't then, so only one side was heard, that was not our fault. It was postponed, but it's my intention to go ahead and put on the agenda tonight, as I have, for us to approve the paving of Grogan Road. The intent is to still allow a couple drainage fixes that, we talked about the Department of Public Works meeting, and probably pave it sometime mid to late June, whenever they're doing the Rongos project. So with that, I'll make a motion to re-approve the paving of Grogan Road.
I would second it.
Second, second that.
So we have the motion, second to approve the paving of Grogan Road, and I'll ask for any further discussion. If there isn't, and/or if the public wants to chime in, we'll allow that.
Do you have a price on that?
Does there need to be a dollar figure on that?
It's already done, it's already approved.
Oh, okay.
We just held off of doing it last year.
Oh, okay.
So we're re-authorizing it to go forward, is all we're doing. Any other questions or?
Nope, I'm good.
Dylan? Okay, anybody, any viewers, attendees, raise your hand please if you have comments or input for this, would like to be heard.
I believe we just had Claire and Ryan.
Okay, so if we don't have any, then I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we will move forward and notify Jason that he can put Grogan Road paving back on his agenda, hopefully for June. License renewal for A and B marketing.
Is that an agency that's been, because it's a renewal, this is something that's been ongoing?
Should be, yes, but they were behind on something, weren't they?
So it's my understanding that they're usually late on their renewals, so most license renewals are done at the beginning of the new year. But for some reason, this business doesn't, isn't really urgent about renewing his license, so I guess this is kind of the time of year that his business picks back up and he, his license renewed.
It looks like taxes were just.
He is up to date on his taxes.
Looks like they were just caught up, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's part of the good thing about the license renewals, is sometimes people lapse on taxes or water bills and things, and it's good chances, and well, if you want to renew the license, and we collect those things.
And we'll care.
So everything is up to stuff, taxes are paid, everything's good to go.
Fees are paid, yeah, he's all ready to go.
Very good. I would look for a motion then to approve this license for A and B auto.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve, approve the license renewal for A and B marketing.
I would, I would second that with the caveat, is this an area that is inspected by anybody? I mean, this business, I just.
I don't think we do any regular inspections in these type of businesses. The only thing is, I know that we do annual inspections, of course, the firearm systems, it should be in all the businesses and schools and things. I don't think we do any ourselves, doesn't mean the state couldn't or something, but.
Okay, just wondered after we approve these things, what are our responsibilities to manage or do anything?
No, really, it's, it's a minimal fee for 100 to 200, it's not a lot in a fee, but it makes, gives us an opportunity really to make sure these businesses cover their other fees and expenses in town, which, you'd be surprised, somebody come in and, oh yeah, I got to pay that and.
I would probably be surprised.
And it's more so for the state. The state has their requirements, and so usually that's when the local business will come to us, they'll be like, well, we can't go to auction, the state won't let us go to auction without this local license. So it's mostly for the state.
Most of our fees are very trivial, even our alcohol licenses are very small in town, so it's almost just a procedural thing.
Okay. Do you think you can call a vote?
I had a motion, but not a second.
Oh, second that.
Second.
Okay. I think it was your motion and her second, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We'll have the motion, the second, for, to approve the license for A B auto marketing. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, Clark.
Okay, moving right through it. We'll go to the COVID update, Jessica.
Oh, thank you. So every meeting, just for Dr. Marshall's purpose, we go through a COVID update. Earlier in the year and, you know, most of last year, it was pretty active updates on, over the past, I would say, month or so, the update has been a little more limited just because the case numbers, you know, we don't have a threat to the town anymore. Well, obviously, there's always some level of threat, but it's not anything that the state is recognizing as a significant threat of COVID spread. I know that the schools have been back in session for a couple of weeks, and I have not heard any, you know, any complaints, anything about any outbreaks there. So we're really thankful that the school is doing their due diligence over the air. We also are not distributing vaccines anymore, which is another part of our COVID update, was that we were permitted for a couple of weeks to distribute vaccines, and then the state curbed that very quickly and kind of, you know, sucked everybody into different regional centers. So our Board of Health have been really awesome, and also our fire department, they've both been really awesome with helping Rutland distribute the vaccine. So I know that she was up there today. You know, in general, our, between our Board of Health and our senior center, they've been amazing with getting residents signed up, you know, taking phone calls, just, you know, doing the signups for the residents who need that extra help. They've been absolutely amazing. So I think, you know, we're at this point where we're still waiting to hear guidance on the ARPA funds, we're still waiting to get a final number on the ARPA funds. It's looking like, I've, you know, reported before, that it's going to be about $1.6 million. But we haven't really gotten any final number or federal guidance on that, so we are still just monitoring that situation, and as soon as I hear something more, that's when we will be able to, you know, start making an actual plan on how to efficiently and effectively use that, those funds. And usually I'll just take any questions.
Wow, okay. Let me move this back out of the way. Usually there's something for you.
Quick question, just a moment. I just put in the chat of the call, the URL to the Rutland Center, in case you want to post that on the town website.
Sure. Yeah, actually, it is under our news, our Board of Health has been updating our town website every time a new clinic comes through with, and usually that's followed by a Facebook post as well. I know that the most recent clinic that we had was the Johnson and Johnson Clinic, which was, Rutland's goal was to vaccinate 6,000 people in four days. And so with the abrupt pause of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, it's really thrown them, you know, for a loop. So they're trying to kind of gather their bearings and resituate, you know, what happened there before they start planning anything further.
It should be noted that they've been outshining a lot of places, they've been doing a fantastic job in Rutland with this, and especially for the local, not a lot of communities are getting something like Rutland, are getting the doses they're getting, so they've done a good job.
And they did the whole school district, with all the teachers as well.
And they got themselves in the state's radar pretty, pretty well, which is impressive.
Yeah, their numbers, I was, you know, I was talking with Chief Knight over there and Rick Stevens, who lives in Barry, and he runs the Board of Health in Rutland, and I was talking to them, and their statistics are actually better than the state's average. So it really speaks to local, the work that local governments can do.
Sometimes the state doesn't know better than everybody. You know, the locals can handle themselves if they let us. And I wish they had done that with, with this more, but unfortunately, it's not the way they went. Other, we have nothing for other this evening. But we do have approval of the April 5th minutes. Dylan, have you read those minutes?
On April 5th, I believe I did. See if I've gone through these, one second. We've got two days worth of notes we have to approve today, are we on?
Nope, just one.
Just the one, right, April 5th. It was a doozy, that's all.
Oh, that's right, yes. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from April 5th.
And I will second that, Dr. Marshall, it seems we have, for those who won't expect you to vote on it.
I'll be abstaining.
So, motion to second to approve the minutes of April 5th, any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote.
Abstain.
Clark, yes.
O'Sullivan, yes. Correspondents, so this is where I usually hand it to Dylan as a clerk, but now we have a new clerk.
Well, I have spent a good deal of time with the correspondents and find many salient points, not that we can do anything about any of it, but.
I wouldn't recommend that, I'd be tired.
I was going to say, but given, given the length of this, I don't think we want to try to read it.
I'd be happy to give a synopsis.
So what do we do? We'll pass it to Jessica for synopsis. If it was a page, I'd have you read it, and I always say, look, so the clerk stays involved too, and gets to do it and do stuff, but this is, this is back and forth a lot, so Jessica, if you would, summarize, please.
Yeah, so I received this communication for the Board of Selectmen late March, actually, I believe we received it on April 5th, and that's why I didn't make it on the last agenda. But essentially, this Ware resident reached out, he's done a lot of research on the impact of the closure of Mary Lane Hospital and how it, you know, the rural population out here is already suffering. I mean, after our discussion on ambulance services, it's very clear that it's a lot of geographic area, but not a lot of population to necessarily support the infrastructure that this geographic area needs. So the closure of the Mary Lane Hospital is just one example of that those services moving farther away from the residents, you know, who, who really need access to life-saving care. So this, this resident of Ware has done, you know, some pretty extensive research into just the decisions that Bay State has made. And I come from the Bay State part of, you know, coverage, so I was born in Mary Lane, I, you know, live five minutes away from Wayne Memorial, and our hospitals of choice is always, you know, the Bay State network, but that's not to, to say that I haven't seen their shortcomings over the past couple of years where they're off, they're continuously, they have continuously threatened to reduce their service. But I, you know, I thought that this was an interesting letter that this, this individual put a lot of effort into putting together. I thought it was, you know, very thoughtful and thought-provoking. As Dr. Marshall has mentioned already, that we can have feelings about this, but our feelings are not going to really change the outcome, no matter how much Bay State shows that they're trying to be community members and community outreach and do all of these things. You know, it can't go unnoticed that they are, at the end of the day, taking away a life-saving service, so I don't know if any amount of community outreach can replace that, but I just wanted to, to share this letter with everybody.
The thing about the letter that concerned me most, not that a hospital wants to cut off a service, it's not being profitable for them, they're in it to make money, but that they want to demolition the buildings so that a competitor can't take it. I think if anything, as a board, we could make a comment, reach out and ask that they reconsider demolishing, and if they're not interested in the service, see if somebody else might be, because it is important to this area. It's certainly a lot closer for some folks than other places, it could mean a 20-minute difference in trip to a hospital to people. And I would, I would think that we ought to suggest in, in an hour. It's certainly a lot closer for some folks than other places. It's, it could mean a 20-minute difference in trip to a hospital to people. And I would, I would think that we ought to suggest and, and ask that they consider, um, leasing or selling the building to another entity. You know, if they lease, they can control that it's used for a hospital and someone's not tearing it down to make a business. But give another hospital a chance to run a clinic or something there. Even something like we have in town with, with UMass Berry Health Center. You can still go there for an emergency and get some stitches, get an X-ray or get some, some kind of service. And they still transport from there to UMass if you really need a full ER. But I, I would really hope they consider offering it up to other medical establishments like UMass that may wanna put a satellite out there and do something. Cause that would give, um, you know, good faith in, to the community. I understand they wanna focus and build a super center and have a really inclusive place instead elsewhere, but it would mean a lot to the public and I think that we might wanna consider drafting a letter of such to them.
They're asking you to do that?
Uh, nope, I'm saying if we all agree. No, we asked Jessica to do that. Unless you wanted to, you could certainly volunteer right now.
No, I, I certainly would like to spend a little more time with it and understand a little bit more about Mr. Bertram and make sure that his, um, his, the data and the information that he shared with us is accurate. Because the last thing I wanna do is to put together some sort of correspondence that assumes...
Right.
Um, that is all accurate. It may well be and I would not be surprised if he's absolutely accurate, knowing that, like you say, it's a business. But, um, uh, so if, if the board would be so inclined, we could potentially ask Jessica and myself to sort of look into this a little more and, um, if appropriate, forward a letter with...
Certainly, yeah.
You know, indicating that we've... The thing, the thing that I think is really important is to understand that we do have some senators and representatives in the Commonwealth, Senator Hines, Senator Goby and others, who do understand the plight of rural, rural America, our rural America. They are now, you know, doing some additional funding to rural schools who have the same exact problems that, that the communities do. And I would suspect that that kind of support, that financial support may well be available to, to us and also to Hardwick if we are...
I was thinking that for Hardwick too, if they, if they maybe got some sort of grant.
Especially because they're losing Mary Lane, which was probably a place where they transported for years, I would think. So I'd like to just spend a little time looking into that and keep you guys posted and, um, put together something that you can take a look at.
Yep, that'd be great. That's, uh, one downfall of, uh, those of us that still have the full-time job and didn't retire yet.
Well, I could have...
Well, no, I mean, but, but when, when we had Charlie Chase here, Charlie was retired and, um, he did so much because he had the time and he could and it's, it's...
Well, I still have another job, so...
Oh, I, I just, he's still very active, I've heard.
But I, but I, but I think this was an important thing and it does speak to the whole issue with the Hardwicks and anything that we can do to bring attention to our, our plight relative to medical treatment and care for our students, for our children. I'm gonna say students and children forever, so citizens, I have to change.
If it is closing, truly, um, all the more reason to talk to the state about some kind of grant for Hardwick.
Absolutely.
Because they're losing that facility. So we need, we should find out either way. I'd be, be shocked if someone went to that extent, if they didn't have some pretty, pretty credible info. But certainly, I don't wanna assume.
I would concur with you, but I always...
Don't wanna assume.
I don't wanna assume.
Yep, cause we know what happens when you assume, if you listen to the old Lord Couple way back when.
I do.
Some people don't, but some of us do. That's it for our correspondence. Dylan, do you have any other comments for this before we move on?
Uh, on this topic, no, I, it's good to look into it and make sure everything seems correct, but, so we'll, we'll revisit this at our next meeting then, is that the plan?
Sure.
Um, well, we can, but if, I think what we're saying is if, if, if they do find out looking into it, this is indeed what the facts are, it's closing.
We'll certainly let you know what we did.
Cause certainly draft, draft a letter. Um, that's why I wanted to approve that we draft a letter if, if, if it's fitting. So if we're in agreement with that, then yeah, we'll follow up next meeting on it, but it doesn't stop, um, you two from proceeding as you see fit on behalf of the board for that. Select Board reports. Dylan, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I'll be really quick. I'm gonna thank and welcome Dr. Marshall. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Dylan.
And, um, otherwise, uh, I've got my, uh, I've got my vaccination appointment set. I'm pretty excited about that. Look forward to getting back in that select manor room, meeting room with all of you pretty soon. And, um, other than that, that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, Orion, would you like any welcoming words? Introduce yourself, I'm sure most people know who you are.
I think most people know who I am and, um, I always say to them, don't leave everything to here. But at any rate, I, I did want to just mention that, um, the charitable foundation within the town of Barry is financing through the Barry Library Association some work with the veterans for Memorial Day, which may indeed just be something that's on staged on the common because I don't know if, um, the veterans have decided or if the select board have decided whether or not there would be a parade or, or any other kind of activity there. But, um, the Ruggles Lane School will be involved and they will be placing over 700 flags on the common um, in honor of, um, not only individuals who are, were, were killed during the wars, but for any individual who's buried in the town of Barry who served as a veteran. And the library will be doing some reopening activities, I think, of, around that and so forth. And so just to make sure that the select board is aware of that. So you're saying, what are these 350 kids coming down and putting something into the... And I know that, um, Captain Brenneck, from, from the ROTC group is going to be doing the address, I guess he was welcomed or by the, or asked by the veterans to do that. So he will be meeting with me on the common on the 29th to sort of give his ideas, cause he is, he's great at organizing stuff, so we'll be working on that. So the Barry Library Association will be sort of, you know, working with this. It's the Ruggles Lane School, the veterans and so forth. And, um, I've got Paul Cranston to promise me, and I'll say that for the, for the TV, that the bandstand will really be ready and I can buy the bunting, he says. So I'm willing to get the bunting if he gets it done. So, I know, save my money.
I think, I think he's got a good shot. Like I said, I'd originally started to work at the railings and once they were hiring someone, it's like, well, I can keep doing my stuff for free and take away from my work. I'll let this guy earn money and do his job.
Okay.
Um, so he has, he's had the railings for several months and I think I got him the railings in, um, probably January or December. So he's got the railings, um, for the, for the handrail.
Okay.
Gives him a good template, finally made him to copy it. See, he, once someone makes one, it's easier to, to copy them. And it's just a matter of assembly and reinstalling. The ones that are there, most of them in pretty good shape. Some have been replaced, um, with inappropriate boards that you wanna pull out and put back with fur instead of pressure-treated or two-bys, you wanna solid members. So I know he wanted to do some restructuring, um, on the railings, but it looks like he's done the prep work. I, I saw he's done some more scraping. Really, I think he's, you know...
So I'm gonna buy the bunting.
I, I think he's gonna do it. I think he's gonna, I haven't talked to him lately, but I really think he's...
I think it'll be a very, very nice thing for the kids to be involved in and they'll get to go down, see the library, they haven't been able to do that. The Historical Society will be opening their buildings and so forth for that. And we'll be, you know, whatever rules and regulations the CDC's put in place for us, we'll, we'll follow.
I would hope we could have our ceremonies.
I would hope so too. I, I don't, I won't, I'm not, I wouldn't count on it because they're saying 150 if you're outdoors, so that we wouldn't be able to assure that.
Cause we, we swamp that easily here, um...
Yeah, so at any rate, just to, just to give you a heads up on that, we're excited about that possibility.
I think we've done stuff, uh, last year, just smaller.
Right.
Without the, you know, town being involved, I'm sure we'll do something again.
Yeah.
But, um, it's really up, up to the committee that runs the parades, the veterans that do it.
Well, I've been working directly, directly with, um, Tony Musnicki on that, so...
Yeah, if, if they decide to do it, we, I think we always support it, but it's a matter of what they're comfortable with.
I know.
We can hope. I, I like, I like the Veterans Day ceremonies and, um, I hope we get back to them. Anything else?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Um, I have no specific report this evening. My, my issues we brought up were with the repaving and, and things that we talked about at the, the Puppet Works meeting. I'd just say welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm excited to have you here. I think we're going to, uh, get some great things done, I hope, and, um...
Well, I have an idea a minute, so you have to just say, no, that's a dumb one, Warren.
No, there's no dumb idea. I've had some doozies, but... All right, well, I started in the beginning, I suggested a lot of things and some were not well met and some were. And, um, Selectman Urban and I and Selectman Chase and I often in the past disagreed hardly on things, but I welcome that because if we don't have diversity of, of thoughts in the board, we're not getting anywhere. If we're all head bobbing together, nothing's done. We have to challenge one another and we're gonna have things we agree on, which, which is great and things we don't and out of those disagreements, the discussion happens publicly, so everyone hears both sides. Everyone hears why we're saying what, and that's why I explain so much about that paving and groving so people know why we're delaying, why I wanna go on. We really want clarity. We push really hard to have transparency in this board. And, um, if we disagree, in the end of the day, whatever we come up with, the three selectmen together, like persons together, have come up with, with a very thoughtful, knowledgeable agreement because we put all the ideas out, we've hammered them over and we come up with, I think, better results because of it. So anytime you see select boys, just, oh, yeah, 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 I worry about that. It's, it's not what it should be about. They used to always redo votes and sometimes in the past, so they could all be in agreement on a vote officially. It's like, I don't wanna be, if I descend, I wanna be descending. I wanna be recorded as descending. And, and Matt was the same way and I don't think Dylan has any problem too. If he descends in a vote, we descend in a vote. And, um, let it be known, cause people have to know what we're representing here, so...
I, I would just mention one other thing is that, that people stop me on the street and say, what are you people doing about the gun shop? I say, nothing, since it's not in our purview at this point, so...
That's right. You know, we don't say who can put a business there and who can't.
Well, there may be some, some bylaw, I said, but that's Planning Board, talk with them.
Yeah, the, between the Planning Board and I would assume the Fire Chief for ammunition.
And the Police Chief, from what I understand, has the responsibility of inspections and those kinds of things.
I, I can't imagine otherwise.
But it is, it is something that people think, I guess, that, that the Select Board has control over.
I know. I, I own many, many firearms. I've had them since I was 15 years old. They've never killed anyone, they've never harmed me, they've never attacked anyone. Um, because it's not the firearms do it, it's, it's the people that hold them. I think you'll find most people who go out and, and use firearms all their life and have been around them and taught to use them properly, uh, there's no fear of them, they understand them and there's no misuse of them because people respect what they have. And I would hope people get educated on it.
Yeah, well, it's sort of, you know, there's certainly a whole, a lot of thing about mental illness and those sorts of things and that's not something that we're not gonna resolve.
No.
And, um, I, I, I just find it interesting that all of a sudden, I think that people think that...
You'll get all sorts of questions.
That the, no, that the, the Select Board have extreme power. Just as I know that this is a board that is elected. It is not necessarily any smarter or better than another board that is elected by the community.
And we have no authority over the elected boards.
Exactly.
It's as simple as that.
Other than the possibility to persuade, even that's if the...
The role of this office, this, this board, is basically, we, we oversee all the funding and finance of the town. We're responsible for signing every check and every penny that's spent, presenting a budget to the town to be passed, which we rely heavily on Jessica to create and we can ask her to, to make changes and alterations. We'll start getting into that presentations, I assume, soon. Usually we see some more, um, Dylan, Andrew would always bring those to us starting in February and push mine all the time. But I would like to see soon some, some budget standings, where we are and what we're worrying about in, in making remarks and what requests we're thinking about cutting and stuff. I would like that you to bring those to the board and, um, I, I try to avoid finance committee meetings, not to avoid the responsibility, but I have always found that when the selectmen attend other meetings, it draws away from that committee. People look to us like we have, should have the answers and it's our meeting. It's not our meeting, it's, it's their meeting. And, um, there's times we need to attend and sometimes meet, you know, go to some finance committee meetings is a healthy thing to do and see what they struggle with. But I, I don't like to do it as a rule. I like to let them discuss it with Jessica and work it out and, um, relay through Jessica what I see for difference and changes if, if, if we have any suggestions. Just the way I like to do it doesn't mean. If you wanna be involved in the meetings, you can certainly go to every finance committee, meeting if you want to. Any, any or none, whatever's, it's up to you. But people will ask you about, you know, when you fix my row, what about this tree? This committee didn't do that, well, so-and-so did this and I want this... And it's, it's, it's like, once you've elected, people sort of feel like you've, through osmosis, now you understand everything that has to do with the board all at once. It doesn't work that way.
Wouldn't that be true?
But, you know, there's nothing wrong with saying, you know, I'm not sure, but I'll find out and get you back and answer it and it's the best you can do sometimes. Uh, most people understand that and they are grateful if you steer them the right way or, or whatever, but, um, you know, if you're lucky, once in a while, people say, hey, I like what you're doing, thanks. I've heard that a couple of times and it's nice. It's a, it's a surprise, so it's welcomed. That being said...
I make a motion, we have Darren?
Well, we've gotta give Jessica a chance for her full... Last time I skipped and I almost broke off. We give Jessica a chance for the administrator report.
Okay, um, so it's just, it's been a busy couple of weeks for me. I think, um, a lot of, a lot of the work that I do, I don't know, you know, how much residents know what a town administrator does day to day, but a lot of the work that I do involves with little movements of projects, you know, that if I were to tell you what I did, you would probably just like fall asleep. But at the end of the year, or at the end of the cycle, we get a good, you know, outcome. That's, that's always the goal. So, um, you know, over the past couple of weeks, we decided, um, the Fire Station Building Committee decided on, um, a architect to do the feasibility studies and so now we're going to enter a, you know, a negotiation phase where we'll negotiate a fee with that, um, firm. So I think that's, you know, a really exciting, um, piece that people can look forward to and seeing, you know, that we're gonna have in the next couple of months, pending approval at town meeting for, um, funding. We'll have a tangible piece towards, you know, the department's future. Um, and so, you know, conversations about that, conversations about, um, OPM Services, which is the owner's project management, um, to help us manage that, you know, that project because, um, between the Fire Chief and I, the, the type of skills and time that you need to dedicate to overseeing, um, a building project is pretty extensive. So, you know, we're talking with OPM Services and to see what we can do during the feasibility study before we're actually required to have an OPM. So, you know, some of those things are the really exciting pieces about the work that I do. The budget is another piece where I, it was my goal to have a document to you all today, just time kinda slipped away for me. Um, because I, on top of the day-to-day things and projects that I work on, I also deal with a slew of unexpected. So, you know, I might, you know, receive a lot, I, I get a lot of calls from residents because if they don't know where to go to, the Town Administrator's Office is always a good place to start. So, it's just, you know, it's been a really great nine months. I've been here for about nine months, we're coming up on my one year and so I, you know, learned a lot and I am still learning a lot, um, on the little nuances that go on in the town of Barry and it's just been a really great ride so far. Um, other than that, I'm also, a meeting that I had today was with the Chamber, the Greater Gardener Chamber of Commerce, where I am a part of an economic development committee. They received, um, you know, they received, uh, some really good views that I'm not allowed to share yet. But it is forthcoming within the next week that I will be able to share with you all and with the public that the town of Barry, um, due to our membership with the Chamber, we get to be a part of, um, and it will really help our future. Um, and of course, I mentioned I'm a part of the Economic Development Committee, so it is within the realm of economic development. And also another grant that I'm working on, um, that has really taken, um, its lift-off over the past couple of weeks is the Local Rapid Recovery Program. I applied for a grant, um, a couple, back in late December. And we just started executing that grant. They're in the research phase where we partnered with CMRPC. They're in the research, uh, phase right now to gather information in the South Barry area, mostly along Route 32, um, on information about businesses, potential for businesses. Um, and hopefully, you know, within the next six to nine months, we'll actually have a plan that, you know, that will guide us on how to approach economic development in that area. It's a really interesting area since it is on 32, a main state road, gets a lot of traffic, but, um, could really use some targeted economic development planning down there. After that plan is done, they, we expect to see some implementation grants come through. So I'll be on the lookout to apply for implementation grants because what is a plan without implementation? Uh, I think that's one of the biggest criticisms of government is that there's always a plan, but where's the follow-through? Uh, so those are just some of the... are just some of the recent exciting things that I've done. And then there's a lot of not exciting things that I also do. Anybody have any questions?
I do not, but something I'm just thinking we ought to bring up is the 250th Anniversary Committee. Does that committee still have vacancies? I would think it does.
You know, I was just doing the renewals recently and I'm trying, I don't think there were too many vacancies. I want to say the seats were filled. We have some renewals coming up, so if people decide not to re-up their appointment, then that's when the vacancies will come back.
If we could for the May meeting, invite the committee or the chair to give us an update, see what they're thinking. I'd like to hear what they're thinking of. Because if we're going to need potential fundings, we, you know, this is something that we're going to probably want to set some money aside for. If, and we've had letters about that. If we're going to have entertainment or we're going to bring in sometimes like the Anheuser-Busch draft horses or something fancy like that, we've got to get ahead and ask for it. We've got to plan them fees to cover certain things. We might want to have a band in, like a college or some sort of marching band to do something fancy or whatever they're kind of thinking. We want to get a handle on finances and see if we can put something in the budget and start chiseling away some money each year because we're getting close.
Yeah. Actually, Richard Stevens is the chair of that committee. He reached out to me maybe a week or two ago with that similar request. He said, you know.
That's, well, I get it from him. It's not my idea. Don't do me a wrong.
Yeah, yeah. And so I.
Breaking up the email.
I asked him to, you know, follow up with a request and I would definitely submit that to you guys. But I don't think, obviously, he's very busy right now. I don't think I've gotten a formal request yet, but I can definitely follow up and ask him.
What is the year for the 250th?
Um.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Seventeen seventy-four, right? I'm not.
So we're just three years away from this being realized. And, you know, this started, Charlie started this three years or four years ago. Started the ball rolling. Oh, it's so far out, we said. And now it's breathing down our necks. So if we don't start putting some money aside, we're not going to be able to pay for anything. It'd be nice to, I don't know what they're thinking yet because we should have had updates for them before now, but, you know, find out if they're thinking about week-long events or maybe month-long. Do something every weekend for a month with a culmination of something. I'm hoping at Felton Field, I'm hoping we get to see 4H involved now that they're being involved down at Felton Field. You know, I'd like to have an idea and get it out there so people start hearing about it in some sort of timely manner. Getting it on our agenda to be talked about, getting it publicized. Maybe want to put publications out for people to think about it. Maybe they're going to offer booths. If people want to start pre-planning for a booth to sell something or do something, an activity for kids. But we need to have an idea of how this is going to go. Is it going to play out over a week? Is it going to play out over a month with just weekend events? And however we're going to do those events, we want to be able to plan them in a timely manner and give people enough notice to be involved because I really want to see a good turnout at the 250th and make it well advertised. So there's a few things. That's one thing that Selectman Urban did when he left. He gave us sort of his bullets. And the bullets were really a lot of unfinished business. One of the ones he discussed was asking to have other boards and committees recorded, like the DPW Commission. I made a comment that I didn't think we'd approve the hammer for the bucket and the other members had we had. Well, if that was recorded, we can research it and see exactly what was done and keep track of those things. And people could all look and see what's going on. And there's very few committees, but we're thinking about, will probably propose, or I will, a bylaw for annual town meeting that would require certain boards and committees to record, like Conservation, Planning Board, DPW Commission.
You need to put something in the.
Put it in the bylaw so it's part of the town code that like we have to hear.
Well, I think it's the law.
It's the law that they have an open meeting and they keep minutes. The minutes from some of the meetings are really, it's difficult unless you're good at minutes. I would be horrible at it. Jessica and Sandy write them. And part of that is Sandy takes the time to go back through these recorded meetings. And she goes right through the meeting. It takes everything important out and puts it down and gets it verbatim. And she works very hard at that. But we have a full-time personnel to do it. These other boards and committees, well, DPW does. You know, Shannon could have time to do these. If she had, you know, the affordance of a video down there that she could go back and look at, then she could be more inclusive in the minutes and we'd get more out of it. But it's, you see how quick the meeting was down there, sort of 20 minutes of actual meeting time. It takes a bullet note and it's gone. So we don't get a lot of context in there that we should have. And, you know, Conservation Committee meets, Planning Board meets off of us. We don't know what's going on. We're not going to see it live. It's not recorded anywhere. The minutes will get some of it out, but how much, you know?
I know that they're supposed to do it with cogent, you know what I mean? So if they're not doing it, you don't even need a bylaw. You just need to say, how can we support you in getting this information out because?
We have. We've offered this room up to all the committees and no one's taken us up in the room in the recordings. So if we had a town bylaw code that said, okay, you have to record these meetings, then we can open up PEG access funds that we get out of cable and assign it to have it recorded and find a service or an individual. If we have to hire someone part-time, we do. They will record each of these meetings as they're set up. So it may be buying some more recorders. It may mean each committee can start it up and record it if there's a meeting at the table as they go. But I think it's a good idea to get that bylaw kicking sweet. So even when the COVID is done, we still have recordings and not just minutes because the minutes, I don't think, often are inclusive enough to really reflect what happened in the meetings. And it's difficult to get a layperson that is not going to be shorthanded notes to do such that. It's just a reality.
Well, hopefully they'll take it more seriously and, you know, if it takes a bylaw. But I mean, if they're not following the law, I hope a bylaw works.
But even, as I'm saying, our own minutes is so, done so well because we are recorded. And Sandy has the opportunity to go back and write them up out of the recording. That review process allows the better minutes. And I think without saying you're going to have better minutes, if it's recorded, that gives whoever's creating the minutes, each committee's, the opportunity and the ability to give a better detailed minutes at their leisure.
Well, I agree with you. If you can set up a place where they can meet and it is nicely recorded for them, that would certainly help. I mean, no question about it.
But for example, I believe Planning Board is meeting tonight opposing us, so they could be here in this room if they wanted to. So there's, you know, a lot of meetings happen.
I mean, it doesn't cost a lot though to set up another recording situation.
Right, and that's part of it.
Where do they meet, the Planning Board?
Third floor.
Third floor. And we've asked before that they meet here and Conservation Committee meet here and stuff. And I don't get it. If you're concerned for COVID, this room has two air purifiers in it going usually. It's spread out. The other, it's a small room upstairs. It's a quarter the size of this. So it can't be their own personal safety concern. You know, certainly the recording's easy enough here to take care of. We can put it on Zoom here. It's a lot of easy things to do.
All right. I mean, that's great.
But once again, we're not in control of those committees and boards. We simply are not.
Well, I would just say though, that the open meeting law is such, if the town clerk gets cited, and she can, because technically she's responsible for ensuring that those minutes and recordings are done. And I feel badly for her if they're not doing it because I think if they knew, this is bad for Ellen if you don't do this. They may be a little more amenable to the task.
Hopefully, because I'd like to see the minutes be, you know, good. I'd like to see the recording because people do enjoy the ability of going on YouTube and looking at these videos.
Oh, don't even tell me that that's true.
Oh, where on YouTube?
I can understand Netflix.
People will be people that didn't stay up tonight and people tomorrow. Let's say somebody is of the age where they might say they have their dinner at 5:00, go to bed at 7:00. They will get up tomorrow and they will go to YouTube, Board of Selectmen meeting, and they'll see what you said tonight. And they're going to watch it. And they're out there forever. And you can go back and research meetings and people actually do it. They like to do it. You'd be amazed how many people actually watch this live, especially when it's closed. Usually in the public, we normally have any place from 10 to 20 people a night and hear from meetings for different issues, so.
Maybe they'll sort of fall away from that now that they can access Zoom and so forth, which they hadn't before.
They don't like Zoom.
No? Well, I live on Zoom, so.
I think it would be more beneficial for the younger population to have this new access essentially, but I know that the older population has, at least in my experience, they have not been interested.
Really?
We typically have attendees like five. In a meeting, we'd have more, but I'll guarantee if we had a way to count how many people are watching this online live, I would bet it's, you know, close to 100. A lot of people do try to follow the tone of politics.
Well, I think you can, there is a way that you can do YouTube hits. How many people hit your meeting?
Well, I'll tell you, misspeak once here and see how many texts you get the next day.
Misspeak in what respect?
Something that they don't like.
I thought it was maybe inappropriate grammar.
Well, you can do that too. You'll hear about it. It'll hit Facebook. You'll get comments and texts.
Well, you know, having sat in hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of meetings.
Yes, more than I have, I'm sure.
Usually people, after a while, they just aren't that interested because they find out that maybe this is much more exciting than listening to the school discussing the English curriculum from 10th grade. I don't know.
Probably it affects them more directly, so typically.
Doing, you know, paving your road is probably more exciting than listening to us.
I just want to cover some things. Jessica, this contract is all set. I don't need to sign this. This is just, because this should be with Board of Health and.
Your contract, or your signature's needed on that.
My initials? Okay, or a signature? Okay. I've signed the letter we did for Rutland and then I've signed these. But these are for you and then the rest of those are for the whole board.
So do I need to sign these?
Yeah, you'll flip up and see a page for signatory and you'll sign and then Dylan will sign. So this one is the letter.
So I'm the Selectman that signs and stuff?
Well, we all do that one. So that's me and then you and then Dylan. Some require all of ours. The meeting minutes.
So this is your thing that I can't even come close to reading?
Right. That's my mark.
Dylan, you can read mine.
I obviously am studying to be a doctor and starting with a signature. What you'll get is the meeting minutes when we approve all those. Those are all for you to sign and whether therefore released, like if we're approving an executive session, often we're approving the minutes but not releasing. So you date those when they're released and when they're approved separately. So you really want me to initial all of these? Oh, my goodness. Well, that being said, I would now look for the appropriate motion because this is off-camera business.
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We have a second? Motion and second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Here, Dylan will call for. Yes.
There are 10 people viewing this on YouTube as we speak.
So we've lost them.
Good evening to you, individuals who are watching this on YouTube. I stand corrected.
All right. So we have motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, all 10.